Good morning and welcome to the Pauline County Board of Commissioners June 23rd of 2015 work session. Call the meeting to order. Remember to turn off all cell phones, necks, pills, and pagers. Marshall, will you bring the... We would like to recognize our elected officials in the room. Mayor Dorsey, thank you Doris for being here. And we have Peter Holden, our licensed supervisor. Thank you all. Today for invocation of pleas, it says Pastor Rodney Carson that we have sang hosi with Pleasant Grove Baptist Church. Would you stand with me if you're able to do the invocation and the pleas?
Let's pray first. Our fathers we've got to you today. We want to praise and thank you for your mercy and your faithfulness to this one. We thank you for our county. We thank you for these men and women that serve so faithful. I pray for you above all things, you give them wisdom. As Paul told the Corinthian Church, "I wish you good health and prosperity." And Father, we pray for Pauline County. In order to be in a growing process, I pray you continue to watch over and bless this, bless this office of protect their dignity and their integrity. And Father, thank you for providing for us in all things. In all things we pray in Christ's name. God bless Pauline County and the United States of America. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The minutes, the May 26th, 2015 work session minutes and the May 26th, 2015 board meeting minutes are available for your review. Today, I know we have folks here from the Sheriff's Department of the Department of Commissioners, right, who present the public safety appreciation award to Jennifer Wiggly and Pauline County Animal Control, Leanne. See, you're on, did you, not the sheriff's?
Yeah, and this is the best part. She had no idea why she was going to be here. Actually, staff had to give a little white line and kind of say, was somebody else getting it just so we could get her here? She'll be very embarrassed to be up front.
Please jump forward.
If we would have told her she had a stand in front of you guys, she probably wouldn't have come.
You can talk about that.
I'll make it quick. Basically, Jennifer came to us in 2012 as a part-time employee. Soon after that, later in the year, she had a full-time spot open up. She came to mine first. We got her to take it, and she did. So about a year later, we had a supervisor position come over and fill the kennel staff. And as soon as we told her, she said, "Heck no." But we finally talked her into letting her know that she can do this, and she accepted. But since then, Jennifer's done a great job. She has an unbelievable work ethic. She's respected by her staff. And her dedication to the animals out there is unbelievable. So we're very fortunate to have her. What we did too, we asked some of her employees to say some things about her, like what they thought most about her. And one of them had sent something over that I think stands out and explains Jennifer to a T, so I'm just going to read it real quick. So Jennifer is the kind of team member and leader that inspires us to achieve our best on a daily basis. Her selfless devotion to the animals and her care and the people that supervise, excuse me, and the people she supervises shows in the quality of work completed and the comfort and health of the animals. She's the, she's the kind of quality person that makes it a pleasure to come to work every day. So I think that says a lot when your own employees that work for you say that. So Jennifer, congratulations, you deserve it.
I might have put a couple of short bits in there.
Shorts, not shorts.
Jennifer, would you like to speak? Thank you, great. There's no invited guests. Good award. Discuss action towards the fiscal year 2015 asphalt contract to the low bidder CW Matthews Corporation in the amount of $5,188,427.25 for the fiscal year 2015 asphalt contract. We have Tabitha Pollard and Chandra.
Good morning. Last Friday, we received bids on approximately 17,000 miles of patching, leveling, shoulder widening, plant mix resurfacing, and striping on various of our county roads. We had two participants. The bids ranged from 5.9 million to 5.1 million. And we are recommending award. This is funded primarily or summed by the state, as you know, with the given LME grant that is used to resurface various roads within the county. And that's calculated by a form work. And basically, they tell us what they're going to give us, and then we're supposed to tell them what rates we're going to pay for that, those funds. That funding with $1,257,411.12 we're going to use. We have, DOT has approximately $1 million remaining from the old fund allocated to the budget to use and the remains of the original funding.
Thanks. I just wanted to add a couple of things in the next few questions you have. I sent you a brief update of the roads we selected and were pursuing this economy with this contract. These are basically our heavy travel roads. They're all at the top 130 in traffic count, but what they carry in area traffic is anywhere from 1,000 to 14,000 cars per day. Couple interesting things. The pricing in this contract is significantly higher than what we expected. We're looking at about a 29% increase versus last year alone. That's not a good thing, but it is looking back to 2007 prices. It's kind of a level we're back at now. That's a sign of the economy and competition returning. Or the amount of work out there is returning, and there's not as much capacity as there was in the down contract. Also, this includes about 15 miles of the heavy travel roads. And also includes aspects for safety, particularly like Cedar Crest Road. We have three curves. We are going to rework and improve the crossflow and shoulders in those areas where we've been having some crash experience. There's a small safety turn lane at one intersection, and then we're adding two-foot shoulders throughout the southern corridor. This is from pretty much Bentwater south to 92, where we're adding the two-foot shoulders, where we still have a lot of narrow two-lane road. Tabitha mentioned the funding. We are having to dip into our splosh funding a little bit more than we would like to. Typically, these maintenance-type projects come from general fund as a day-in, day-out type expense we should be covering. But fortunately, we do have some splosh to cover these increases, particularly in safety projects, which we're glad that we'll do that with splosh. There were just two bidders. Four firms did pick up proposals, but only two submitted. And I'm not sure why that is, but just off the pan talking to some of them, they are very busy, and they're not as aggressively going after some of the contracts. I hope that does not continue because that does not help us as far as meeting our long-term paving needs going into the next years and trying to, the next several years, to try to catch up. With that, if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Scott, my question would be, how much will we have to draw out of splosh? The numbers, I haven't done the math.
We haven't finished all the math because we do have some bond-funded roads. A small portion of this is bond-funded from developments that we collected bonds on or some remaining infrastructure task force funds. That's up to 300,000 of the total. Splosh could be as much as about 2.1 million total. And I'll have to circle back with y'all and give you the exact pennies after we digest a little, this a little further. We just received the bids Friday, and we have nothing else for all the numbers.
So you'll just keep us updated?
I will. I'll be glad to do that with Tabitha. And also, one other note, the most expensive item in this entire contract is patching. And that's also not a good thing. We'd like to spend money on resurfacing the roads and patching, but as I think y'all know driving around the counties, some of our heavier travel roads are showing a lot of deterioration. That's going to be typical for several years to catch up. I think it's 1.2 million in totals just for patching.
One thing that you mentioned in brief that I'm excited about is that extra two feet that you're putting on all these two-lane roads, some of the roads that I've driven on since they were resurfaced last year and widened, are so much safer. A lot of accidents from teenagers going off the side of the road.
I think they seem safer. It definitely helps our maintenance when you don't have dirt shoulder around the edge of pavement that can wear out or get rutted. And then somebody run off the road, unfortunately, they might overcorrect or something like that. It could lead to the crash. Hopefully, this would result in actual safety improvement after we analyze the crashes long-term. Appreciate you mentioning that. Cedar Crest Road is our heaviest traveled road on the list. There's some other very deteriorated roads that y'all know about. Old Bill Rick of Road, Vernoy Aiken Road, Zion Church Road is probably the least traveled that traveled. That's out of Buchanan Highway, several miles outside of Dallas. Senator Road, 5,000 cars a day. You wouldn't think a road like Senator Road carries down as traffic, but it actually does. That's all I have for you.
Thank you. Great job. Appreciate it. There's no invited guests, enforcement committees in departments, none. Public participation on agenda items. We have two people signed up, and you signed up to speak on new business item number one. Was it your intentions to do that now? Or if you're planning to speak in a public hearing, all you need to do is come up and sign up and speak, so...
That's fine. I wasn't sure since it was on the agenda. I'll wait.
Okay. And you'll wait? What this does is, this would limit you to five minutes.
I understand.
You don't have a limitation.
I understand. Thank you.
And Nancy, does that serve you just as well? Okay. Thank you. Consent agenda. We have two consent agenda items. Appointment Jenna Barton to the Library Board of Trustees to replace Miss Terry Harris as Pauline County District Representative for a three-year term beginning July 1st, 2015. Number two appointment, Mr. Michael Scott to the Board of Elections with a term beginning July 1st, 2015 and ending June 30th, 2019. Would you like to move any of these items to regular section? Hearing none, we'll move forward. No old business. We have new business. Item number one, that's a public hearing of our fiscal year 2016 budget. I'm going to call Tabitha to talk to us just a little bit before we open the floor for discussion.
Good morning again. I'm going to be very brief. And last week, we talked about revenues and what's kind of happening, and I'm not going to repeat that. But maybe this helps some understand the budget process a little better. First, the revenues, as we discussed, we have a little bit more additional revenues. Those are not property taxes. As we discussed property taxes, we are proposing a rollback, which you will actually collect less this year than you did last year. Over the past few years, the makeup of our revenues has changed. Property taxes now make up about 39%, which is down from about 48% over the past 10 years or so. We saw this last time, but it's important because a lot of times to the public, the digest is primarily on what the property taxes are going to be. It's the most important part. So I've put it in again. Our digest has declined over the past few years with the lowest in 2012. It is climbing back, but as the line at the top shows, we have continued to roll that millage rate back so that we don't pay any additional taxes. This year's proposed millage rate is from 7.267 in 2015 to 6.528 in 2016, with all others remaining the same except for the state, and it will be eliminated next year. The breakdown, the way your, of your property tax bill, basically, the .5 is the state, 6.528 is the county MNO, and 2.22 is debt service, 3.1 is fire, and the 18.879 is the score. If you look at a $100,000 home, this is basically where your property taxes go. You have the county MNO, 26112. And keep in mind, this has no exemptions because those are different for everybody, so I have to exclude exemptions and exemptions. And to put those into percentages, it breaks down basically the same way millage rate is set up. Your expenses, we do have a proposed increase in expenses for general fund. It's 2015 was $59,553,700, and with 3.2, almost 3.7 of that being capital expenses. And this year, you have $59,630,000, and about 2.6 of that is in capital expenses. Your proposed use of fund balance in 2015 was 3.6 million, and 2016 is 2.2 million. The breakdown of power, money spent is public safety is largest portion of the budget. This is MNOs only. This is county MNO. Public safety is 37%. Your next is general government and public works. And then we have housing development, culture and recreation, health and welfare, and judicial and for purposes of this explanation, I pulled out capital outlay and added it as a separate category. Those are for all of the different functions of the government. And that's all I have on here. In the back of the room, I had a handout for everybody. It looked kind of like this. I don't know if I checked, I'll tell them if there's still a part of you back there. Basically, this public hearing today is to discuss the general fund, which is your county MNO, as well as other taxes. The total, the total expenses are 59.6 million. Your fire tax is primarily funded by the fire tax, property tax. Your special purpose, 911 is funded by the dollar and a half on the phone, every phone service to cover the cost of 911. Your special court funds, those are held in your courts, mostly in the court system. They're funds that are taxed on the fines, and they are very specific in what you can spend money on. So I can't take money out of there and spend it somewhere else. It's under the jurisdiction of that constitutional officer and law dictates what it can spend on. Enterprise solid waste, that is our landfill. And solid waste and water sewer dower both enterprise funds, so they're monitored throughout the year. If you bring in the money, you're able to spend the money. But if you don't bring in the money, then you can't spend the money without coming back to the, you say, that you want to make a contribution to them. The solid waste is not self-supporting, the general fund puts about $200,000 a year into it unless there's some equipment failure and then you have to... Your splosh, that's from a referendum that was passed in 2010, I believe, and came back in 2011. We have very specific guidelines as to how those monies can be spent. We send percentages to each city, and then we spend it on roads, public safety, recreation, and economic development. Debt service is funded primarily by property tax as well, and it's used to fund the debt that currently has. Your CIP, those are funds that are of a large project. So in this particular one, we have an intergovernmental group of school boards, which is going to be for DOT. And you can look in there and see that we have a grant, a HO grant, NSP HO grant, which is included in there as well. And we've also had a lot of interaction with GFO over the past few months, and it includes those funds as well. So Nancy, you have any questions?
Will you tell us, every year a mill changes value. It was worth probably in 2012, and we had to raise the village. And at that time, I had a lot of people get up and accused me of would I ever roll back the taxes? And I rolled back the village, and we've done that now. This will be the second year in a row that we've done that so that you wouldn't receive the tax increase. But a mill today is worth 3 million and...
3.5 million.
3.5 million.
And in 2006, it was 3.3 million.
This budget does include a 2% raise for employees and any other tidbits that you remember?
I can't think of anything else, but those are primarily the expenses that are included. And each packet of information, you have a list of the personnel that's been included, considered, as well as the capital purposes that are being considered.
Any questions more on Tabitha before we open up the hearing? Okay, at this time, I'll open up the public hearing of fiscal year 2016 budget and ask you to come to the lectern and make your comments. This is not a question and answer timeframe, but a comment timeframe. There's a sign-up page up there, and fortunately or unfortunately, either way, you're not limited so to the timeframe. So if you would, the public hearing is now open, so if you wish to speak now is the time, but please come up.
I'm here. Let me sign it real quick.
If you would, say.
I'm Nancy Hollenshead, now from Owensman Park up in Dassler, North of Pauline County. Anyway, I have a couple of questions. I'll start with some of the easier ones first, real quick. I tweeted the budgets between the district attorney and the public defender. Now, I know that everybody goes before the district attorney, does not need a public defender. And I don't know if it's because the public defender has not grown their department, but for them to grow their budget three times what the district attorney is, I just was kind of questioning that. I don't understand the whole thing over there, but it looks like a lot of money and a lot of stuff going on. And it kind of seems kind of strange that, you know, we go after somebody, and then we turn around and pay to make sure we get them off. But, you know, it kind of looks kind of strange to me on that. But anyway, it just looked like it was like three times their budget from the district attorneys, and I just didn't realize whether or not there was some reason there. Maybe there's something, kind of look at that. My next thing is, I had talked to several people that have worked in some past administrations and different stuff, and one of the things, the administrator's position was brought in during Bill Carruth, two terms ago, two years ago, to help out with the full-time commission chairman, and because he was out of, out of the pocket a lot. Well, I believe with a financial, a full-time commission chairman, who we, we let good people in their commission chairman into full-time, that they can run this county. They did it before that, and they can still do it. I think with a good administrative staff within your own board of commissioners, you can do that. I see that they were asking for another position under the board of commissioners to put under the, at their, another admin position. And while we also are paying an admin position right now at the administration area, and we don't even have a county administrator, this is a senior county admin person. So there may be a way that you can move that person over under the board, or maybe you don't even need a senior under that. Another thing that was brought up to me by some other people is Channel 23. Channel 23 is now a full department with a producer. I don't know if it's changed that much since 2012, that we now have to take it from just a, one of the events, admin assistants under the board of commissioners that was running the whole thing to a full-blown producer, which means we have a whole different department and budget item on there that's, you could save, you know, around 100 grand or so. Maybe not cut that much, because you have to pull somebody that's more of a low-paid admin assistant to do it. But anyway, those are some ideas that were brought up to me that I just kind of wanted to throw out there and just for y'all's consideration. Thank you.
Please sign in. Okay. Good morning.
Morning, morning, morning.
I have some notes here. And like Nancy, I think that before we just automatically take money out of reserve, we need to look where maybe we can cut some corners and use some cutbacks before now. I am not suggesting at any point that any of the employees pay raises. That 2% is minimal pay raise for employees. But economic development, it's malfunction. Jamie Gilbert left here in November. His official date of leaving was December. There's nobody there. There's nobody in the building. There's no administrative staff. I understand the board is still meeting, but there are no expenses. So since Jamie was only there for half a year, I think they should have some money left in their budget from 2015. They could easily roll over in 2016. I think we need to look at that. We should also rely a little bit heavier on the chamber and to attract businesses. Maybe we just really don't need an economic development, public-private partnership, that that just needs to be a department within the county government. The county administrator, which Nancy touched on a little bit, and government services, those are two that can be combined. It would save at least $200,000 a year not to have that extra employee with administrative staff and benefits to go along with it. The industrial building authority. This, of course, is a pet peeve of mine. They have so many assets that they probably shouldn't even have. They shouldn't even belong to the industrial building authority. And I think before they get any more funding, they need to liquidate some of those assets and get their funds there instead of taking, taking it out of and dipping into those with their funds. Pauline County Airport Authority. They want to stand on their own. Let them stand on their own. Again, we can let them be separate and let them stand on their own, or we can repeal the IGA, and then they can have some funding. Now, I want to talk about one department that I looked at that's spending in 2015. And in late April, I did an open records request to identify purchases and payments for the chairman's discretionary fund of $50,000 and below. I was surprised to learn that through the accounting department, they don't have a separate line item for those that spend the church. Nobody does. I revised the open records request, and as usual, Tabitha, thank you Tabitha, was very accommodating and broke out payments dispersed between the amounts of $34,999 and $49,999. accommodating and broke out payments dispersed between the amounts of $34,999 and $49,999 for me review. When I looked over that, I noticed there was a whole bunch of payments to a company called Kendall Supply. Tabitha and I talked about it, and there were 45 different dispersments over a three-year period. And all of the dispersments that I saw were under $50,000, with an aggregate total over three years of $2.1 million. After some questions and help again from, from Ms. Pollard, I understood those purchases were for census water meters, for the water department to aid in reading water usage for public customers. I live in a rural area, and I can definitely understand why those are so much better. When they open those lids on those water meters, there could be snakes, like with those spiders. So, I understand that this is a necessary expense, and it probably needs to be done. But when I went back and checked, there was only $520,000 approved to reach for those meters. And through April 21st of this year, there were 21 different dispersments under $50,000 to Kendall Supply, for a total of $997,606. It was over budget by $477-plus dollars. So the questions that I have for the commission is, why were these expenses so far over budget? Why were the 21 different dispens, dispersments under $50,000? And I'm not implying that Kendall Supply said anything wrong, please don't even, don't even think I'm doing that. But knowing that we have to tap into those reserve funds again to meet that 2016 budget is alarming. Who authorized those additional expenditures? Are there more expenditures that exceed the $50,000? Or are there some more below the $34,999? Shouldn't those over-budget expenses have been approved by this Board of Commissioners? If there's a procedure in place, is there a procedure in place to track those budget expenses? If so, why isn't it being utilized? And if not, why not? So, based on just this little bit that I've seen, I have decided that, you know, we can save $1,752,000 by defunding economic development, combining the county administrator and county services, defunding the IBA, defunding the Pauling County Airport Authority, and getting those, just that one department item overage is $1,752,000. I have copies of a spreadsheet that I did showing the payments to Kendall Supply for 2014, 2015, that show the overages.
Give your hand over.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Good morning. My name is Anthony Avery. I live at 219 Fair Lane, Temple Court, but it's actually out near the Strickland area. I will be piggybacking some on the others that's already spoke. But first, I'd like to start with the minutes rate, and I know it's been proposed that a minutes rate will be rolled back, that's good. But something needs to be done with the minutes rate. If we don't do it, then there is going to be a tax increase, so. But then I would like to move to the Board of Commissioners Department, as it's already been related to. Now, these are just the cost, operating cost increase numbers that I'll be giving you. It does not include any other salaries benefits or anything like that. This is just kind of, I just took one section of the budget and highlighted that, and that's the operating costs increases of the departments. And the Board of Commissioners Department is requesting an increase of $27,300 in its operating costs. I would like to issue a warning of concern for me due to the past spending history of that department, such as backdoor consulting fees to former employees of this county. So I am concerned to approve that I, again, could the governmental services department and the county administrative department be consolidated? Right now, there is no county administrator, and the county has been doing well without one. These two departments could be consolidated with one department head or supervisor to oversee the operations of these departments, hence saving more money on salaries and benefits. Do not feel that we need a county administrator at this time until the bad taste in the citizen's mouth has been gotten rid of from the last administrator. We have a full-time chairman, which is, in my opinion, we do not need both, we have a full-time chairman, which in my opinion, we do not need both a full-time chairman and a county administrator too. It should be one or the other. I would like for this board to revisit the pay of the chairman. If we are going to have a county administrator, the last one was paid as much, if not more, than the chairman. I feel this may be a duplication of some services for this, for this county, and maybe we are overpaying one of these positions. If this, if this consolidation could be done, the county would be saving at least $17,800 in operating costs for the governmental services department. Again, that's just operating costs. Channel 23 Department is requesting a $5,000 increase in operating costs also. Since the budget is so vague in it, on its explanation as to the needs, it raises concern when I see this kind of request. It may or may not be justified. The Board of Elections is requesting an increase of $305,100 for operating costs. This seems very excessive. Is this something that can be phased in over a period of years instead of a one-time increase? This may be legitimate, but again, the explanations being so vague in the budget, it's hard to tell whether this is justified or not. I just ask that all these requests be investigated severely before approval. Please, well, there are 18 departments, if I counted correctly, that's requesting an increase in operating costs in this budget. Please make sure the increases are necessary before approval. It should be a major concern to this board to balance the budget, which has not been a major goal of past boards in this county, it seems. The total increase of operating costs that's requested in this budget from these 18 departments, from what I figured out, is $968,264. Now let's move to the marshals' budget. At this time, I'm going to refer to the IGA that was adopted and crammed down the citizens' throats in November of 2014. Page three, section four, scope of services. The authority shall at all times, now this is the latter part of the paragraph, there's two parts to the paragraph, to this section. This is the bottom part of the paragraph. The authority shall at all times maintain the airport, or cause the airport to be maintained in a safe and serviceable condition in accordance with the standards set by applicable federal, state, and local laws and regulations. A Google definition of a safe condition was a place or an atmosphere free from, free from fear of harm. This paragraph requires the Pauling County Airport Authority to be completely responsible for the safety at the airport and to the airport, period. Now, in the 2015 budget, one marshal's position and two admin positions were approved. Now that, that, now that one airport position must be defunded in the 2016 budget, that position still exists, and one is made into promoting one sergeant. Now there are seven, now they are requesting seven, now this is all budgets, this is with all the adjectives, but they're wanting seven mar, deputy marshals, two sergeants' positions, and one captain. This request should be denied due to the funding of, defunding of the airport position that bring in the span of control into a reasonable range. The span of control is, is how many people or how many things you can control, have under your immediate control, and effectively control that situation. And that's what I'm talking about, is in the span of control. It's, it would, the best span of control is three to five, but seven is on the upper maximum range, but can be manageable. The board which, this board was approached in replacing several Pauling County administrative of Pauling County Airport Authority board members not too long ago. However, there was feelings that the Board of Commissioners should keep their contract with the Pauling County Airport Authority board members. Well, now I expect a second return. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Parbiko, if you wanted the IGA so badly, well, now hear to him, completely. Defund the marshals providing a safe place on county property. According to the job description of the marshals, they are to provide security to the admin building and other county buildings and events, along with code enforcement and other duties assigned to them. I feel that having two marshals in the media is excessive, excessive when backup is one minute away downstairs at the most. It is time you stood by your word, now it's time to keep your promise. Also, since the city of Dallas has their own marshal's office, and the city of Hiram has their own code enforcement officer, the county may not be obligated to provide that service. So I feel that we have in the 2014 budget, what we had in the 2014 budget is sufficient to provide the services needed in Pauling County. I do not feel the Pauling County needs 10 marshals to provide the service they do for this county. Again, I will request that this board seriously consider any and all operating cost increases before approval. Now, the fire department is requesting seven firefighters. This is reasonable and needful request. The fire department has been in need of some attention for some time now, and it's time we give them the attention they deserve. I would, I'd rather put firefighters in the station and on fire trucks than put marshals at the airport and backdoor consulting fees. Now to the non-departmental stations. I know we are contractually obligated to the IBA for line payments. A few years ago, I heard the number was $250,000. I'm not sure if that's accurate now. I understand we have to meet that obligation, so I am requesting to meet that requirement, but defund the IBA totally after that amount. Also, please defund the economic development department, if not totally, then partially. It is not the county's responsibility to fund this department when the cities of Dallas and Hiram also benefit from this department. I think the most the county's portion should be is $50,000. Finally, I would like to address the county's legal system. I think this county needs to have an in-house legal team. The firm that is currently used is involved in numerous agencies in this county, which gives an impression of mistrust of the legal advice given. This does not give a perspective of open, honest, and transparent government, which is what this county desperately needs and deserves, and the citizens are demanding that. I have an issue with, I had an issue with an advisory board recently concerning the sunshine law. There were numerous violations. I notified the person in charge, and I gave them three pads of the solution. I only received one reply, and that was written from Jason Phillips, not the county attorney. I advised Mr. Phillips that I wanted to discuss these issues with the county attorney, and his reply was that he could handle the situation. I finally emailed the county attorney and received a reply that Mr. Phillips is an assistant county attorney. So now, how many attorneys are we paying for, and does the, does the county employees know who the county attorney really is, or did this employee know and just disregard the fact we have a county attorney that they may not have liked or wanted to use? The final note I would like to bring about, bring out is about the budget hearing. This, this is the first year that I know of that the public hearing notice was placed in the budget, in which it may be a good idea. However, given past history of the Board of Commissioners' public hearing notices, this one gives the impression that the public was not really intended on being properly notified. The reason for this statement is, if the intention was to openly notify the public, then the notice would have been noted in the table of contents, which is part, which it was a part of, and it was not noted anywhere in the budget. Now, if it was, if it was not a part, if it was not intended to be part of the table of contents, then it should have been placed behind the cover page, so it would then have been seen first before the table of contents. But since it was behind the table of contents page, then it should have been listed. That way, all doubt would have been removed, and it would have shown that it was in fact to properly notify the public, and would have, gave a perspective of an open, honest, transparent government, which in fact, it did not accomplish that in my mind. Commissioners, there's an old saying, if it ain't, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. Well, that's, that is not the case in the 2016 budget. It is broken, and it needs fixing. So I am strongly requesting that you fix it. It is time to fix this broken budget. It is time to do the right thing for Pauling County and fix this budget. Thank you.
Any other citizens wishing to speak?
I'm just going to speak to you briefly about the recreation budget. I have some concerns and some questions about the recreation budget that I just wanted to bring forward. As you well know, I spoke in front of this board many months ago, several anyway, about the terrible conditions of White Oak Park trails and the obstacle course that is there. And as of this date, I'm there almost every night, as of this date today, the only thing that has been fixed are some large drains put in to drain off the runoff for when it rains heavily. What I'm hoping, looking at this budget here, is that the intention is to fix all of the broken things at White Oak Park this year with what money is there this year. What concerns me is that I don't see anything in there for improvements for next year. I am very thrilled to see about the repair work for, I assume that's going to be Playground of Dreams at Rayleigh Sports Complex, but it got off, but I think, is that right? I think it's Playground of Dreams probably that needs all the work. I hope that that happens, but I would like to, to put in a couple of different thoughts here. Resurfacing of the tennis courts at Sarabat Park. My understanding from a citizen that came to me to speak to you about the Sarabat Park tennis courts is that that money was already allocated, and those courts were never resurfaced.
Sarabat doesn't want them.
Is that City of Dallas? Okay. I'll talk to the City of Dallas about that. I wasn't real sure where the line was there, so I appreciate that. But regardless, there are parks out there that need some extra attention that I, that I don't really see on this list, and I'm hoping that we can, you can tell me that this year's funding is going to be used to fix them. I don't know the answer to that, and since I've spoken to you already about White Oak Park more than once, I'm, I'm a little hesitant to be confident in the recreation budget for next year, since we know that there's going to be decent repairs next year there too. Anyway, I just wanted to bring that forward. I'm all about the Parks Department getting funding, but I'm about them using the allocation of their funding properly. And I'm very disappointed so far in what I see going on with our Recreation Department and how they are upkeeping the parks. So I just wanted to put that out there, anyway.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commission Chairman and Commissioners. In 2003, Industrial Building Authority had the county to approve and back a 2,003-seat bond of over $3 million to purchase land. In 2003, Industrial Building Authority had the county to approve and back a 2,003 seat bond of over $3 million to purchase land. In a report filed to the State Department of Community Affairs, signed by the Chairman of the IBA that year, the form stated this bond was for purchasing land. The money was held in their account until 2011. Land was not purchased. In 2011, it was brought before the IBA Board, a matter for which the money was to be spent as blank requested for engineering and other costs. Keep in mind, this money was got to purchase land. The people of this county was told it was to purchase land. The state form was filled out, purchasing land. Did not purchase land, but spent it for engineering and other costs. For the time the IBA set on the money, it is my understanding, the interest on the money sitting cost the taxpayers of this county over $1.5 million. This was disrespectful and irresponsible. I ask the IBA not receive any funds in the 2016 budget. The county will still be responsible for the bond debt payments that have to be made. And other things that need to be taken into consideration with the IBA, they're still operating a film studio that's losing money. Commissioners need to take all of this into consideration. The IBA is a debt source putting debt on the county, it's not relieving debt, it's adding debt that needs to be stopped. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak? Good morning.
I'm Virginia Galley. I live in Hiram, and I wanted to say thank you for rolling back the military rate. I think that's awesome, it's a good start. My only concern is that we're still dipping into the emergency fund. I would like to encourage each of you to take a hard look at this budget and cut back on some of that, because we all know if we drain that fund, the military rating will be rolled back anymore. We're going to have to raise it, or something, the next time a problem comes up. I understand from economic folks who study these things, that we may be in for another round of real estate problems, even as we're just coming out of the last ones in a very kind of tepid way, that we may be in for another round of foreclosures. So I think we need to not be overly hasty to drain that emergency fund. I think we should be really diligent to cut back on expenses. We don't have an income problem here, we have a spending problem. And, although I know it's worse a lot of places, we do fairly well here, I think we can do a little bit better. And so I would encourage you to do a little bit better, and let's not empty that greenback fund out. That's all. Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to speak?
I would like to address the Commissioners' Discretionary Fund, which I, along with many residents, believe that it's too high at $50,000 a pop. We would like to have it reduced, preferably to no more than $25,000 each time. From what I understand, that has to be addressed by the Legislature, which means we'll have to wait until the next General Assembly next year to address it. We hope that you will. In the meantime, we would like you to establish some sort of protocol for accountability. It's, it's unbelievable that there isn't one at this point, and this county needs there to be one. The budget needs there to be one. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
See to none, I will oppose. Quite amazing, public hearing, the first public hearing I've ever been to, and I've been to several of them, Mr. Chairman. Where there was a lot of questions asked and no answers given, and that's just, to me, that's just totally unacceptable. That's the purpose of a public hearing, as I understand it, is we get to address you and the Commissioners and your staff, get answers to some of the problems that we see. Now, I'm going to speak on a couple of the things that people have already talked about. And what I call the rainy day fund or the revenue fund, and I want to, I want to carry you back a little bit in history. I want to go back to when you took office. And I want to remind you of the condition that the budget was in when you took office. And I want to remind you what you had to do and what the other Commissioners had to do during that period of time. Because we had a Commission Chairman that was in his lane that period there. He didn't, he didn't pay anything. He let it all fall on the next Commissioner. That's what I see happening right here. For the last two years, we have depended on the, on the rainy day fund, as I'm going to call it, to pay for capital improvements that's in this budget. And if I'm wrong, somebody needs to stop me right now. I don't know, other than the SPOSH and the jail fund. If I'm looking at the budget right, there's nothing in here coming out of the general fund that pays for the capital improvement. Am I right there, sir?
You come up with these questions, we'll give you an answer.
Well, that's what the public here, as far as to get these answers.
Yes, we'll prepare answers for you, but we don't know where they're coming out of that field, so we'll prepare answers to all these questions.
When?
As soon as we can digest it and get you an answer. This is for y'all to have public comment.
Will there be another opportunity for public comments?
You can come to my office anytime you want.
Went through the same thing last year, Mr. Chairman. And it took me from the public hearing until July 31st, after a lot of prompting to your office, to finally get an answer to some questions that I asked at the public hearing. To start with, you were answering the question, and then all of a sudden, they, you can't answer them anymore.
No, sir.
A public hearing is just exactly that. It's an opportunity to ask the people that's spending our tax dollars, what, why are you spending it in this fashion?
I'm preparing you some answers, and you're welcome to come to my office.
Don't walk away. I want the answers in the public hearing, and I think people are here that can give the answers.
We're trying to get the information in, and then we'll prepare you some answers. Ms. Pollard is also taking some notes, we will prepare you some answers.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
We're taking notes, we'll get you some answers. Ms. Pollard is also taking some notes, we will prepare you some answers.
So all the, all the people that's asked the questions, they will get a response in writing from down there? Is that what I'm hearing?
We're trying to take some notes, and right now, I don't know that this Board knows what they're doing with their votes yet. And it's part of the purpose of the public hearing is for them to decide. So they're taking in the public comments. I myself have taken almost six pages of notes.
Well, then, I've been in public hearings for years, and we got the answers in the public hearing from Jerry Sherman, the Commission Chairman. I'm sorry, but this, this is a farce of a public hearing up here now. We are entitled to answer what you're talking about, but you've got no sense of answer.
If you've got any more questions on the budget, ask them, and we'll get you an answer.
It's not just questions, there's comments too, Mr. Chairman.
We'll get you an answer.
Well, I'm opposed to taking the rainy day fund. What bothers me the most about this rainy day fund is, is I know that back in the day, and we're talking about 2011, 2012, in that timeframe, that we had to raise the military rate to raise up the rainy day fund.
No, sir, we didn't. We had to raise the military rate to meet our obligations.
I don't believe that.
Because the value had fallen on all the properties. We didn't do a tax increase then, and we're not doing a tax increase now. A rainy day fund is to have you operate in a crisis timeframe, and the fund builds up of, the minimum that we have to keep is about 19 million. We accumulated sometimes up to 33,000. There is a period of time that you run the government before you receive any taxes from the public, and that timeframe is usually from July until October, November. So you use some fund balance during that time, but you build it back up, and that's what we try to do, is look at that fund and use it, and it's only used not to balance the budget, because by law, the statute was made earlier, by law, the county government has always run a balanced budget, and the state has always run a balanced budget. By law, we're required to do that. So that's what we will continue to do, and that fund will move up larger and will become smaller, but we are, for our bond rating, we must maintain, correct me if I'm wrong, but 19, and the 19, 20 million is what we have to maintain.
Maintain, actually, we're required a little bit less than that. If you drop to the bare minimum, you're going to have to adopt policies to rebuild that. You're going to have to tell the public and everybody where, how you're going, and creditors, how you're going to rebuild those funds. So you can't drop to a minimum. We operate 30, about 30% of the year, we operate using fund balance. From July until October, we don't have any money coming in, because those property taxes are due to the Tax Commissioner, and they process them, and they send them down to us. So we have, we should maintain at least the 30 to 33% of the fund balance that I'll have.
And right now, our fund balance is?
It's right at 50.
Right at 50.
50. You say 50.
Right at 50%, and we're required to keep 30.
And what that allows you to do, or is it allows you, if something comes up that you need to do, such as the GSB or the driver services, or projects that would really benefit the county, it gives you funding to be able to do that. If you have a minimum fund balance, and you have your revenues equal your expenses each and every year, you can survive, but you're not doing anything in addition to that.
Well, I guess I'm the only one that understood it back in the day, and this is under your administration now, that we needed to increase its fund balance from where it was when you took over, and we needed to raise the military rate in order to do that, and we did do that. And the military, the military rate as a result of that, it built that fund up to last year, 30,845,000, and that was way too much. I understand, that's way too much, and for some reason or another, we just kept that military rate at that, and we just kept building that fund up at that, rather than...
No, you're wrong.
How did it build up?
It builds up over a period of time, and whatever your budget is, it calls for a different amount according to the budget. Now, when we had the floods of all nine, we had money in the rainy day fund to fix our roads and then let FEMA and GMA give us money back. There were counties in the state that didn't, couldn't fix their roads because they didn't have that money prepared. And there's money that's set aside for, like, now we're having a State Patrol headquarters here, and we've used some of the fund balance to help build that, but it's, it's not like a slush fund, it's a fund that you turn to for emergency or for a capital expense, not to balance your budget.
It's a fund that we're using for the last two years to pay most of our capital expense, and I...
There's some capital expense, yes, sir. Yes, sir, there is some capital expense.
That, from what I understood her say, is that's the only thing, that's the only way you can take that money, it pays for a capital expense. Am I wrong there?
It is correct. You can't use it to balance your budget. It can be used to...
We are indirectly using that to balance the budget, sir. If we didn't, we would have to come up with $2,600,000 or something more dollars in order to pay for the capital improvement. If to a vet, you're taking that out of the rainy day fund. This, this is no secret, you can't hide that.
Wrong. Any other comments?
I want to talk a minute about the IBA. I talked about it last year, and if they get an answer. But from last, from last budget year, the best I can recall is the IBA had bond debt out to the tune of in excess $38 million. Now, since then, we know that they got another $6 million out for sewage, they got another $2 million out for corporate hanging, got another $1,200,000 out for water tank, and I don't know what else. We got 3.2 million, I know, for a bond out for the expansion of that. Now, somebody, Commissioners, and I'm talking to basically the ones that's, that's got control, somebody has got to deal with this. You cannot have a department that's totally out of control, like this department here and has been. We heard from the other Commissioners, and the other administrations, that they're going to stop that, they haven't got any control over what the IBA does, other than this $512,000 that they're asking for today. Now, we got to ask ourselves at some point, why do they need $512,000? What is their fund balance? How much, how much are their assets? Does any of y'all know, any of you know what the assets are of the IBA? You got them right there, what are they, sir?
I'm not going to read them, can I? I've got them.
Well, can I have a copy of them?
I'll mind.
Huh?
I'll have a copy. You'll be glad, somebody will be glad to make you a copy.
That's unreal. You might commission, and that's unreal that I can't look at the copy you got there. But that's all right, that's okay.
Mr. Condon's still on top, please, unless...
I am, I'm on top of the IBA, and he got a copy of what the, what the expenditures and assets and everything is, and he don't want to give me a copy of it.
That's fine. He'll give you a copy after me, you'll get a copy of that.
I heard what he said to start with. That's the problem with the IBA, folks. They sow many secrets that nobody wants to let them out. You, you and you are entitled to those. Y'all going to have a decision to make, are you going to let the IBA continue to be funded, or are you going to do something about it? Are you going to allow the IBA and the PCA to continue to be funded, or are you going to do something about it? Now, this is not the last Commissioner's problem, this is yours. This is your budget, this is the ones that y'all going to pass and y'all going to hold And y'all going to make the decision, is the IBA doing what needs to be done with the tax dollars or the spend... tax dollars, or is spending what needs to be spent properly with the tax dollars? I'm saying they're not. You don't have any control over it. You got lawsuits. You got lawsuits right now in the Paulan County Superior Court saying that they're not doing what they're supposed to be doing with the IBA. And the only thing that's happening with that lawsuit is it's being drug out month after month after month through frivolous things to keep them here until they can get back to the legislature this next, legislation session in January and try to change it again. Commissioners, that ain't the way you're supposed to be doing with that tax dollars. You heard the lady talk a while ago about Kendall Supply. Discretionary funds. Two million and something dollars spent on what we've been told are water meters. I call out water meters. They budgeted for water meters, but yet we want another two point something over a three-year period for more water meters. And my question is, did any of them water meters or any of that go, was any of that money in any shape, form, or fashion diverted to the airport? Because that's more water meters than we got households, folks. Something wrong, Paulan. I won't propose that we just defund the IBA total. And I know, I know, Mr. Carmichael, that's a radical position. But why, I'm going to ask you, why should we take five hundred and twelve thousand dollars in taxpayer money and fund an IBA that we have no control over? When they turn right around and we know they got a million dollars because they loaned that to the airport authority? Right? We know that they paid that back, I guess. I guess they paid that back. I don't know that for a fact, but I guess they did. I guess there's somebody watching these books to make sure that that million dollars that was loaned to the airport authority was paid back. I'm going to ask, was it paid back? If so, when? We know that they were the bond issued by the IBA for about four to five million dollars. And I know that every one of them that was on the commission at that time, including Commissioner Cornell, supported that issue. And it was a good bond issue, in my opinion. And it was to pave these unfinished subdivisions. But there was a little, there was a little kicker added to that, too. That if those subdivisions start back up and those lots get paid, and those lots get sold, a home gets built on it, then that builder is supposed to pay whatever his portion of the collateral deed to pay that, that to somebody. Who is that? Who is getting that money? And where can I see that in the budget that that money is being paid back?
That comes back to the county. Scott mentioned that a little bit earlier in his presentation. Don't want to say exactly, but somewhere around three hundred thousand dollars of what he's doing actually has come from that. That comes back to the county when they come in to get their permits.
It's on, it's on the whereabouts in this budget.
I'll have to say you later.
Okay. Paulan County Economic Development, that would say another two hundred thousand of them would have spent what we had for them. Last year, we couldn't possibly pay them. Because it's been months since we've even had a director over there. And yet, we're proposing another two hundred thousand for them, and that's ridiculous. That is absolutely ridiculous. It is ridiculous when I see a sign at the airport that supports the air show, and that they took some of that money and paid to have that sign put up. How much money in this budget went to that? How much money in this budget, both this year and last year, actually went to the Chamber of Commerce? We were assured that they were going to be self-sufficient, wouldn't need any money. And the twenty-five thousand dollars this year, the fifty thousand last year, we assured that they're going to be self-sufficient. Commissioners, I'm going to submit to you, that we got a Chamber of Commerce that can't live within their means, then we don't need to take no tax dollars they give to them. That's just plain and simple, like I can possibly make. If they can't run their business, which is to get business here within their means, then we don't need them. They need to, they need to live on their own two feet. Kendall Supply has already been covered by cash. We need answers to that, Captain. We need answers...
I will be glad to give you an answer to that. That number has been miscalculated. That open brokerage request was for a PO as well as a check list. If you know anything about the process in a county, the POs are issued at the time to secure money for their services. Then we receive the service, and once we pay that PO, it liquidates that PO down. If you add the amount of PO and the amount of the check, you're double, you're including the amounts twice. So at the very least, I do not have the numbers in front of me. The numbers that Ms. Helm gave me has two checks on there for fifty thousand dollars each. I know that there were more than that, but I don't know how, I don't know the amount because I don't have it in front of me. But the PO numbers, you can't add the POs and the checks together. That number is extremely important.
Got one more question.
Y'all need...
I knew your suggestion that it's double.
It's, it's at least double.
I know it's on attorney fees. Twenty fourteen seemed like we had four hundred and something thousand dollars. Twenty fifteen, we budgeted, I believe, it was either eighty or a hundred thousand. What's the actual for that this year?
Repeat that number.
Twenty fourteen, that was budgeted or actual expenditures of twenty fourteen for attorney fees legally, was four hundred and something thousand dollars, that's actually what was paid out. Twenty fifteen, I think this year, we budgeted either eighty thousand or a hundred thousand. Not possibly, but it's, it's that, one of those two. This year, you got a hundred thousand in there. I don't think that's a realistic figure. I think that figure of twenty fifteen, I honestly believe that we're in excess of a hundred, hundred and something thousand now. And I don't think that we can come in at a hundred thousand in next year either.
Your attorney fees are vested within each department's budget. What you're looking at is other professional fees. There is nothing in my department of legal fees. What you're looking at is other professional fees, and those are not primarily legal fees.
Well, I'm going back to the question now. There was four hundred and something thousand dollars actually spent in twenty fourteen. Am I correct that?
You're, you're in the wrong, you're not in legal fees.
I mean...
If you're looking at the line...
Professional fees.
Professional fees.
Professional.
Those are not legal fees.
Oh, not, it has nothing to do with the court case?
Um, I can't say it doesn't have anything to do with it, but that is not primarily our legal fees.
So you're saying that based on this right here, that we don't have any legal fees?
They are within each department. Each department includes it in their operating budget.
For the IBA, where would I find any legal fees?
I am not aware that I pay, that we pay any legal fees for the IBA.
That true, Mr. Chairman?
The IBA pays their own legal fees?
That true, Ms. Chairman?
That's what your attorney said.
The IBA pays their own legal fees. It's not paid by the county.
Out of what? Out of this five hundred thousand, five hundred and twelve thousand?
I don't know what that they, but they do pay their own fees. It does not go to the county.
I'm on rest on that, right there. Commissioners. Nobody knows what the IBA doing. If y'all can sit there in good faith and give them another five hundred and twelve thousand dollars more power to you. Thank you for your...
Mr. Condon, before you sit down, I've got one comment because I misspoke a minute ago, and I want to make sure that I correct that publicly. Scott, tell me if I'm wrong. The bonds that we did, if the infrastructure passports shed to the IBA, we did set something up to where we're collecting money as people come in and do their building permits to take care of that. I spoke that Scott has three hundred and something thousand dollars that came from that, and that's actually not right. Am I correct, Scott? That's, that was from bonds paid on subdivisions, not from that fund. Am I correct, or...
There's actually both, both applied to that. There are collective developer bonds that we applied to the paving projects.
Okay.
But those projects are left together, so you have a mix.
Okay.
Some developer collective bonds, and some, there is a little bit of money left on the original bond sale for paving the non-subdivisions. We intend to spend that out this year, and it's only because that original contract underran a little bit that we have some available still to us. And we're working to make sure that is spent appropriately for those projects, and some remaining streets that still remain incomplete.
I mean, the first meeting in July, Mr. Swalper annually comes and gives a brief on the budget and other activities that are going on, so that's forthcoming. I've got a budgeted amount here for legal for twenty sixteen for the IBA, but I don't know. I'm at liberty here.
I don't have any hat, I'll be honest with you. I don't see the IBA work at all.
Well, anyway, Mr. Swalper, yeah, I think our first meeting in July, second week of July, our next meeting, as a matter of fact, and he will cover all that, I'm sure.
Under oath and record law, I might have a copy of what you got.
Anybody else wish to speak, Mr. Chairman?
Yes. I just have a quick question.
If you would say your name and if you would sign in for us?
Oh, sure. Anne O'Brien. My question is under capital expenditures. With the exception of the EOC nine eleven request for improvements to the center, the next highest item on this request is improvements to Regent's building as requested by Regent's. Every other item on here is specific, you know, roof repairs, replacement of split system, repair elevator, but this just is vague. Improvements to Regent's building as requested by Regent's. Maybe I'm naive, that kind of sounds like a person who's renting a house you have that calls up and says, gee, I'd like a pool. So if somebody could explain what three hundred thousand dollars in improvements they've requested, I would appreciate it because that is the highest item with the exception of the emergency center. It seems like a lot of money.
I don't know if you are aware or not, but we have a Regent's, we own the building, and Regent's is currently losing a portion of that building from us. They requested, and the lease renewal is coming up, and they requested a substantial amount of repairs to that building. Primarily, it's HVAC units, which is over two hundred thousand dollars to this building. And then a few other renovations, like restrooms, carpet, a lot of miscellaneous stuff. Those, that, that is currently in negotiations. I don't know how that turns out. I don't know what agreed, what pieces of that will be able to negotiate into that lease. The idea of the lease is that you recoup your costs after you have, when you have that lease in hand. Because that's why it's listed like that. I don't really, that's a maximum amount. It'll be something less than that, and specifics of what it consists of, that's yet to be determined.
Okay. I just, I guess I was just concerned that it was cosmetic in nature. I think everybody understands if it's, you know, instead of roof repair or HVAC or something like that, but if it's just cosmetic, they want new carpet. I mean, I know you have to keep the building up, but it just seemed like a lot of money. And then my other question was in regards to, there's two...
Let me answer that, too. We're in the deciding factor. It's the amount of money requested and the revenue to that building would warrant continuing that lease. So if there's not anything we've decided we can do, this board will decide if and when we do do it.
Not set in stone, it's still to be determined.
It's just a request by Regent's in order for them to renew their lease. And we're not sure we're even going to do it, so...
Again, I understand, you own the building, you have to keep it up. You can't let it go into disrepair. I understand that it just seemed odd to me that everything else was very specific, but that just was just sort of improvements, then why do you understand what that meant? My other question is, there's two requests, and I'm not going to try to flip to them for, well, there's actually a total of three, for copiers. And two of them say it's about sixty-nine hundred dollars, but the Board of Elections' request for a copier is nine thousand dollars. So I just wondered, what is the difference of the copier that the Board of Elections needs versus the other two departments? It's three thousand dollar difference. So what kind of copier do they need that costs three thousand dollars more than the other two departments?
Well, it's, it's a specialized election copier, and we were invited to attend a demonstration on it. And what we have to do is pay Kennesaw College right now to print ballots, and we can't predict how many people will vote. And so we've been presented with, by the Board of Elections, we've been presented a demonstration to print our own ballots and then save quite a bit of money in ballots that have to be destroyed and shredded when you're finished. So again, this is being able to almost print on demand, you print a number that you think you're going to get, and then you will go ahead and print other ballot as you're going to need them. But, and Ms. Holden is on number two, and maybe she can talk to us just a little bit about that machine, but it's not a regular copier that prints ballots. And so keeping up with it numerically and those type of things, so instead of paying Kennesaw College that fee, we do that in-house, and that should save us some money.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else wish you to speak?
I'd like to just take a minute and say thank you to the folks that did speak. I want you to know that I heard you. Ms. Hollenshead, Kathy Helm, Tony Avery, Miss Liberty, Roy's parts, Virginia Galloway, Sue Wilkins, K.B. Coggins, and Anne, is it O'Brien?
Yes.
Okay. Good, I heard that. Heard you loud and clear, taking notes. I appreciate you taking the time. It does take, it takes some time out of your day, it takes a little energy from you, and not, not everybody enjoys getting up to do the public speaking. So I appreciate you looking up with the budget and putting in your input. So I appreciate you looking up with the budget and putting in your input. Hopefully we can look over this and get back with you on some of these. Ask each of you if you feel like you need to give me a call if I can help you with anything on it or we can talk together and you can help me with anything on it. Been really glad to hear that. I would like to make a comment. I heard several of you loud and clear on the IBA budget. I completely understand the frustration there. I myself have been frustrated many times in the past over that. And I want you to know that I heard you loud and clear. If you need to call me or talk to me about that, feel free to. And I just appreciate the time that you took to look over it and to get with us. So thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to say something also. I greatly appreciate everyone taking the time to share their ideas. That's what this country is about and hopefully it does filter down to this county that we love so dearly. I also took some notes and benefited from your remarks. One of my concerns with the revenue for the county is that it's not very well balanced, that it still is on the shoulders of the homeowners and it still is a county where so many people have to leave Paulding County to work and therefore surrounding counties receive some of the taxes that I wish that we could receive. The, of course, the taxes are, that we're talking about are property taxes. It's also sales tax. You go buy your lumber at Home Depot, of course, the county's getting a little bit of that. The tax that we receive from industry and from corporations is anemic. And I think there's so many areas in Paulding County where if we support a chamber of commerce and if we support the Industrial Building Authority, that we can, we can end up with a lot more tax revenue that's, that's not just on the backs of the homeowners. The, my interest is in improving all the assets in the county, every asset in the county that could be beneficial to us. We don't have an interstate coming through here or any kind of a river. The, I attended a meeting in Canton a couple of weeks ago with some other county staff about 10 potential films in Paulding County. It was interesting, the first thing that, that they require us to do was to sign a confidentiality statement that we wouldn't go out and share all the information that was provided there by directors and producers and financiers, is that a word? People that finance the news. But it was confidential in that, in that way. And I know that's rubs people the wrong way, but in so many cases, that's the way business is done in the county and you go to ACCG training as commissioners and the economic development instructor gives you examples of that type of confidentiality. So things don't, don't always happen if you don't follow those type of rules. I really hesitate to make any comment about the airport because it's so controversial, but it's an asset that, that could have earned an economic impact to this county in 2014 of 22 million dollars. It's not 22 million dollars of tax money, of course. That's just an impact that tax money could be drawn off of. And that's, that's a very, very conservative effort. And if any of y'all want to sit down and talk about where I got those numbers, I would be happy to do that.
I'd like to.
Point please. You speak.
The, the Economic Development Office, you know, just scratch that or X it out. I think it's very short sighted. If you go to the Economic Development Commission at the state level, I would think Governor Deal has few things that he places higher than that commission, the Economic Development Commission. And I worked for the state for 20 years and worked actually transporting economic development boats. So it's a huge, huge issue for the state and I think we at the county levels should learn from that. The, we, as a director right now, I know that the board is working on rehiring a director for economic development and we can continue progress there hopefully. The Richland Creek Reservoir, you know, that's not just independent water. That's going to be a recreational facility where people from the region, people from other counties will come out to Paulding County and enjoy the recreational opportunities, may fill their car up with gas, may stop in Hyrum and have a good dinner. There are lots of ways that having a county that's progressive will help all of us and it won't just come out of your property taxes. I think it's Mill Battlefield. We've got a Paulding County Tourism Council that's led by Mr. Terry Williams, who we met last week.
Ms. Mr. Perry.
Ms. Perry. I didn't go, I don't know where, but I had read the website. So they're trying to do, you know, a lot of things to help tourism and showcase the county. The, the Historical Society, Paulding County Historical Society with Wayne Willingham and Hugh Walters, Ken and Dana Strack and a couple of others on their committee do a great deal to improve awareness of historical opportunities in Paulding County. And along with a lady named Peggy Klein, who are strongly interested in advertising and promoting the historical activities and opportunities at Paulding County. Silver Comet Trail, Fannin Cooper Farm, which is the only centennial farm in Paulding County. And our courthouse is on the National Historic Registry. The Color School in Hyrum is another facility or building that's in the National Historic Registry. Just the downtown area, areas of Hyrum and Dallas are things that all fit together as part of the community and can, can improve the economic development and therefore spread the tax base. The hunters at Paulding Forest, and I could go on and on, but it's just a concern to me that, that we close off this asset or that asset, the other, instead of, and this is Paulding County, let's pull all our assets to, to have more opportunities tax-wise for the county. For, have the DOT have to spend so much money just to patch hogs. We can do way better. We can receive a lot more money than we are from the assets that we have.
I will. Anybody else wish to? Yeah, let me say, I just want to thank everybody for speaking today also. I took three pages of notes and I liked what some of you said. Some of the things gave me the opportunity to think about different things. I will look them over and we will be making decisions and it's not set in stone yet. Thank you.
I will now close the public period and, you know, want to thank all of our boards. If people serve on these boards and it's a thankless job. It's elections, it's clutter, it's economic development, it's IBA. And you take great, great people in your county and they serve at no cost except to be punished verbally for their decisions. And again, they volunteer and they do a marvelous job. I appreciate all of our boards and I'd just want to thank them for their commitment. We'll move on to number two, discuss action to approve the contracts for municipal elections for the City of Dallas and City of Hyrum, Deidre Holden. And if you would, do you have anything else to add to?
Yes, I would like to add. I want to address two things that I heard here in this room, but before I do, I want to say this. I love to hear things like this because that is what this country is founded on, is the freedom of speech. And one of the best ways you can, can do that is to vote. And as all these people were speaking, I was thinking back to the election of 2012 when I know three of you were elected. And for some reason the other day, I was having to look at some statistics. And what is very disheartening to me, because let's get real here, elections is a money bet. We don't make money for the county. That's not the purpose of what the Board of Elections is. However, you have to have us. We do the best we can with what we have and I want to say that when I first took this job over, Paulding County was sitting at about 44,000 voters. By the end of this year, and that was in 2004, when I started doing this in the November election, in 2004, that was the number. By the end of 2015, Paulding County will have over 90,000 voters. But what saddens me is the people who are so passionate about candidates and about elected officials, just a little over 10% elected the people that make the decisions for this county. And that is what breaks my heart. There is no excuse for Paulding County not to have one of the biggest voter turnouts in this state. And that is why we have three, three full-time employees, that includes myself, and we have two part-time employees. I'm not going to ask for additional staff because I don't need it. Not only am I the election supervisor for this county, I'm also a voter and I'm also a taxpayer. So yes, where your money goes concerns me as well. But I will say this, I want to address Mr. Avery's question first. The way that elections works in a budget year is quite confusing because a budget year runs from July 1 to June 31. Well, when you have an election year, and I'm going to use next year as an example, we start out working on the March 1 presidential preference primary. We're actually working on that next one. We'll start spending money on that probably around September. We have to have people that work our things, voting locations that come into our office because I promise you, five of us can't handle all those voters that come in to vote early. So we pull our poll workers in who are paid less than most poll workers in the entire state, but they're satisfied. I believe our poll workers would volunteer their time if, if they wanted to. They're, they're good people. And while I'm saying that, I would like to encourage all of you, I need poll workers. And I would love for any of you in this, this room to come see me because we need new people to work the polls. Because I did feel that, I've had so many people that have come in and out of our office that have worked, that never had a clue what elections do, but when they leave, they have a better understanding that we do more than conduct elections on election day. But to answer your question, Mr. Avery, I don't know where you're getting your number from because when I look at the paperwork Ms. Pollard has given, I see that, that we are showing an increase of 175,800 dollars. I know it looks like a lot of money, but the truth of that is, is I have to plan for the, what happens if? What happens if we go into that primary in May and we have 15 people on the ballot with opponents and we have to go into a runoff in July? I have to compensate for that because if I don't, I wouldn't have the money to pay those people who work those elections. Will we spend that much money? Absolutely not. But I have to have it there in case there is a problem. So that is what I want you to understand. I don't think we've ever spent 100% of our budget and I don't, I hope we, we don't ever have to. But with the election year we have next year, we start March the 1st, which will be a federal election. The week after that election, we go into qualifying for the primary. Our primary date for next year is May, May the 24th. The runoff for that will be in July and then you go into your general election in November. And because of the Supreme Court making the ruling they did that we, none of us have any control over, we now have to separate out federal candidates from state and local. So when you have that runoff in December, if we do, that would just be state and local. We still have to carry on over into January and do a federal runoff. So we will be voting from January, if you count the early voting, of 2016 all the way into 2017. So I have to account for that. But with that being said, the, the budget years, when it comes to elections, kind of stops in the middle and then I have to pick up and plan another budget to cover the rest of the election. To me, an election year is from January 1 to December 31, but unfortunately, that's not how the budget works. So I appreciate the comments you made on that because, like I said, we do the very best we can with what we have. Paulding County is one of the fastest growing counties and I'm seeing now with the people that are moving here, we obviously have something to offer because if we didn't, people would not be relocating here and they would not be registering to vote. So if you have any more questions, you are welcome to come to my office and we'll go over things. To address, where is she? I'm sorry, what was her name?
Ann O'Brien.
Ms. O'Brien's question. In 2004, when I took this job, we had a copier that I think was from the 1950s. So that was one of my biggest correspondence, to get a copier that works. So in 2007, I was permitted to purchase a new copier, which I still have now. We do, we do all of our printing in-house. The only thing that we print outside of the elections office is our envelopes that we use every day. Mr. Austin was referring to something different when he was answering your question because he, and I'm going to talk a little bit about that as well. But the copier, the price, the 9,000 dollars, the copier I have now, when we purchased it in 2007, was about 17,000 dollars. And if you look at it, we probably have over about 600,000 prints on that right now. We use our copier. But the copier, when I said, you know, I've got to have a new copier, we put more repairs into that copier in the past two years, we've about worn it out. It sounds like a car that won't print sometimes when we use it now. But I just asked for a quote and depending on Ms. Brown in finance, she said as many copies as we do, that was the quote I got and that's what I put into the budget. I'm hoping it could be lower, but that's what, that's what the difference is. We utilize our copier a tremendous amount because we do everything in-house. But I did want to, if Mr. Austin will permit me, I do want to talk about the printer he's referring to. It has already been purchased. We spend a lot of money on the ballots, the paper ballots for absentee and provisional voting at every election. The state would prefer that I purchase a ballot for every voter. So you're looking at me purchasing, coming up to the March election, that would be 90,000 ballots. I refuse to do that because I have never had 90,000 absentee votes and I don't ever hope I do. But I have to, to cover myself because what happens if there's some major catastrophe on election day? You can't vote on the voting machines, you have to vote on paper. So we went to a presentation, Ms. Austin, as well as the other commissioners were invited to come on a, on a piece of equipment called Ballator. We will now, because of this purchase, and I'll tell you how much it costs, it costs 20,000 dollars. This piece of equipment, we will now be able to print our ballots in-house. So I spend usually per big election, presidential preference, primary and the general election, I normally spend between 6,000 and 8,000 dollars on ballots. With this new piece of equipment we have, we will be spending around 1,000 dollars an election. So that's going to be a major cost savings because 30 days after an election, the ballots that we did not use, which is a lot, goes through the shredder. And when I'm sitting there watching that, to have one ballot printed, it's, it's 39 cents. I'm thinking there goes 40 cents. I'm thinking, there goes forty cents down the drain of taxpayer money. And I don't appreciate that. So the commissioners were very gracious to me and we had money left over in the budget that we're in now and I was able to purchase that. So hopefully, when we get it up and running, y'all are all more than welcome to come in and look at it. You'll have to sign in to see it, but we're very proud of that. We're very proud of the way that elections is progressing in this county. And I thank you for entrusting me to do that. And before I go into what I'm really up here for, I want to say this. These men in front of you have a very thankless job. And I know that we all don't agree with them sometimes and they don't agree with us. But they do deserve appreciation because I've told them before, every one of these men have come and sat down with me before they made the decision to run for office. And I've always told them, this is not about you. When you do this, you're not just the one getting elected. Your wife, your children, your entire family. So I think that they've done a great job and I think you all are doing a great job. But, you know, sometimes we just have to agree to disagree and do what's best for this county. So I'm going to get off my soapbox now, but I do encourage it, plenty of you please vote. It is so important. So y'all have to.
Okay, and I think you need to talk about the additional.
We are contracted with the City of Dallas and City of Hiram to conduct these whole elections and they fall in odd number of years. They have already taken these contracts before their councils and have agreed with the contract that's been put before them. The City of Hiram, their total amount that we have projected is seven thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. And the City of Dallas, the total amount projected is eight thousand four hundred and fifty. So all that's left now is for you to vote on this, that we enter into these contracts, that they will pay us up to this much for our services, sign it and work on it.
Any questions?
And the only other thing I can say is we've done these and basically every other year, we've had municipal elections. It's very similar contract to this one.
Thank you. Number three, discuss action for the board commissioners to accept the chairman to execute necessary documents for a grant from the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council to approve the Accountability Court Funding Committee to aid in the creation of the felony drug accountability court.
Mr. Chairman, the board, I appreciate the opportunity to be here. On behalf of the judges of the Street Court and specifically Judge Dean Bucci, I come here today to tell you two things. One is, we've done our due diligence, we've done our research and we've evaluated the drug court possibility for our county. And I'm here today to tell you that we'd like to move forward with that. We're excited about that and we hope to have the program up and running by the first of the year. But with that, we'd like to ask for your help and that is that we have been blessed to have received confirmation of the grant of one hundred twenty-one thousand three hundred and fifty dollars from the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council. And at this time, we'd like to ask for your assistance in approving that and direction for the chairman to execute the necessary documents to make that happen. The grant itself, I mentioned this before, but just to go over a couple of things so that everyone understands what this grant is for. It's basically for the startup for this court. And again, as I've mentioned on previous times I've been here, this is not actually a new court. This is just really a program within our existing court. We're not asking for a new judgeship or new courtrooms to be built. We're going to utilize existing staff members that we have currently available from the different departments to pull this off, with the exception of the money that is included in this grant. It's basically for the coordinator's position and it would fund the coordinator for basically the first year. The coordinator will be an integral part of this process. It will also assist with some contract personnel that will need to execute this plan. There's a treatment component, a surveillance component, and that is to send some law enforcement folks off duty out to check on residents and things like that. This would be above and beyond the normal course of operations for the sheriff's office. Drug testing kits so that we can make sure that folks are in compliance with not using alcohol or drugs. And then some equipment costs will also be involved in this, a iPad, computer, business cards, brochures, handbooks, and a scanner. And those are all included in the grant package itself. I spoke with Judge Bucci this morning and he had a trial going on this morning, so he asked me to come over on his behalf and submit this to you. And both of us want to reiterate what we have said, both of us have said to the board, is that we are going to do everything we can after this grant is received to make sure that we apply for existing grants out there for future operations and also to tap into what is referred to as the debt fund, I'm sorry, the date fund, which is a drug fund, is a surcharge on drug offenders and DUI offenders. It's a fifty percent surcharge on your fines. And that money can only be used for certain things, as Ms. Pollard had indicated earlier about some surcharges that come out of the court system. One of the things that we can use that money for is for drug and accountability courts and we intend to utilize that fund. So we're going to try to be as lean as possible and it's not our intention at this point to come back at any time in the future and offer you anything but a progress report. So we're hoping that we can pull this off without asking for additional funding.
We've spoken about this several times and I've heard Judge Bowles, who have set this up, talk about it and we're, I think the biggest improvement comes in is the repeat crimes. It can lower that by a considerable amount. And it is also for the whole family. So, you know, get somebody in drug court, it's accountability with the whole family. So I'd like to have heard, we'll hold your feet to the fire and ask you to, you know, continue to give us reports. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and we want to have our feet up in the fire because we want to be transparent with this and that's what we try to do to this whole process. And as you know, we've had to speed it up a little bit because we wanted to make sure that we met this deadline. It's funny, we didn't want that to come and pass and we have to wait another year. But the beautiful thing about accountability courts, no matter what it is, is it does help the community because it helps with repeat offenders. It absolutely does. There are a number of accountability courts out there and my experience in the past and my other life before I came to Paulding County was that they're very effective. And I've seen, not only drug courts, but my primary experience has been with DUI courts. And they're very effective and then way of the future. So we're glad to be one of those courts in Georgia that's moving forward. And I just heard recently at a meeting that I was at, that there's only a few counties now that have them. I'm very thankful that, thank you for your consideration.
And I believe the governor's son is also in drug court.
Yes, sir, he is. I believe it's the circuit near Athens. And he has, he's been quite involved in the drug court. Thank you. Thank you.
Number four, I'm sorry. Number four, discuss action to adopt Resolution 15 that 16 of the Paulding County Board of Commissioners for the purpose of requesting the donation of the unused Georgia Forestry Commission property to Paulding County, Georgia, reused by the Fire Department and other purposes. We have Chief Pelfree and then Lonnie Skipper.
You can speak first or you can speak first? This is a resolution that Chief Pelfree had asked for and it requests that we ask the Georgia Forestry Department to donate to the county the building located at 122 Industrial Way North that they are not currently using to Paulding County for the Fire Department so that they can store some equipment and use it for administrative office for the training officers. And that resolution indicates that the chairman would formally make that request and it contains legal description of that property itself. So I don't know, Chief Pelfree wish to add to that?
We currently share the facility with fleet maintenance. Y'all have all been to the training facility. It's very small. We have four training officers over there at this time and they're sharing two very small offices. Training room is very small. We have reserve trucks and equipment as well as two accident fleet maintenance. And we're just asking for this property. It came to my attention a month or so ago, Chief of Forestry Denise Croker's here and she had brought it to my attention and they have used the building for a couple of years. It's just sitting there and we're wanting to use it. It's just around the corner from the training office and it's got four large bays as well as a little bit of office space. So we were wanting to use that to kind of alleviate some of the room we have up there.
Do you have any idea if any improvements are needed on the building?
There is some improvements. It's about a twenty-five hundred square foot building. It does need a few improvements. We can work with what we have now, but eventually it will need some improvements. It's a large building. It's got a lot of things that we can do.
Anybody need to ask Chief?
Yeah, now if you move to get this building, does that mean you move completely out of fleet building? And so you can stay there?
No, we'll need to stay there as well. We're growing, you know, we have over a hundred and forty personnel now in the street and all and our training has increased and requirements have increased and we want to do more, train our personnel, so we'll keep both.
Okay, then one more question. It says other purposes. Can you elaborate on other purposes?
Other purposes, as far as parking equipment, we can use it for administrative offices as well. We can also just use it as two point one acres, I believe, so we could use it for some props for training and things of that nature. There's all kinds of things that will get very resourceful.
Not indicating the resolution that the chairman can formally put in a request and he could accept the property as well if we got it. Right now, we have to actually make the request, which we intend to do very shortly since we can get.
Yes, Parkdale County did this. Parkdale County did this when they consolidated Georgia Forestry and they were able to obtain that facility there and that property. And we're kind of following suit, kind of what they did with the resolution.
Do you have a question? Thank you very much. Thank you. Number five, discuss action to authorize the chairman entrance of an intergovernmental services agreement with the City of Dallas for South Main Street project.
We talked about this a little bit when we did the Georgia power relocation agreement for the power lines up on South Main. Just a little bit more about the agreement. We have designed a sidewalk system that will connect us from our entrance here on South Main back to the city sidewalk system at Seaborne. And it would be a county expense, the project, but it does include a few items that the city has requested. And the city would participate in the amount of a hundred and twenty-seven thousand six hundred and seventy-four in any bid we would award. The project is out for bid now. It's due in on July 10th. It will come to you at the following meeting. We'd ask that you approve this agreement. This allows us to occupy the city's right of way, do our work, allows them to reimburse us for the portion they requested. And then it means that they will maintain the project once we're done with it. So it will be a city facility, a city sidewalk system, city drainage when we're done. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer. One, I have one thing to add. One thing I'd like to do, on Article One, there's a sentence in there that says the project will be completed by May 31st, 2016. I'd like to insert substantial completion to occur by May 31st, 2016 so that we can, let's say if we were to reject the bids, they're not satisfied, we had to rebid, we would need some additional time. And then it also allows for closeout items. We look at it as a rigid date. I don't want there to be a technical issue with us still having our contractor establish grass or get everything in shape so that the city would accept the body that could occur after the planned completion date. Do you have any objection to that? Ask if you amend the, or include approval to insert that at work.
Any questions? Thank you, Scott. You have a great job. Thank you. That's the conclusion of our regular business session, no executive session. Before we hear a speaker come, I just want to clarify a couple of things. There's no slush fund. What I have is fifty thousand dollars legislatively for signing authority to pay checks instead of having to come together and have a call meeting or have to wait and get two or three other folks together. It allows me to sign ability to carry on and I am the CEO and I do one of the day-to-day operations, so I don't have a slush fund that I pull money out of. This is allocated monies that we use to pay for different projects. Now, what I would like to tell you is some absolutely great news. Speaking with David Letson from the Corps of Engineers. We're, I think, within the thirty-day time period for our 404 permit for Richland Creek. And I'm excited to give the state the county address in August and make that announcement. I'm not sure I can tell you the date that we have it, but we've done everything you heard Mr. Powell now talk about, attending to a BAT study that we did, which was the last thing we were required to do. And it's been an unbelievable process since 1999 when this was started. I have worked almost every day that I've been in office doing something for Richland Creek Resort and it's finally fixing to pay off for the citizens of Paulding County. So I think we'll have some exciting news here soon. There's no executive session. We do have one person asking to speak on a non-agenda item. That's Patty Smith on transparency. Person memorized. Ms. Smith, if you would, direct your comments to me. Do you have a comment?
Thank you so much for the opportunity to redress my grievances to you concerning a lack of transparency in regard to First Amendment issues that currently exist in Paulding government. In my opinion, Paulding County citizens deserve not only the opportunity to have their concerns heard by you, they must also have the opportunity to be informed so they may thoroughly understand the issues. In an effort to be transparent here today, I would also like to acknowledge the collaborative effort undertaken in writing this speech between Dina Sanfilippo and myself and encourage all speakers in this forum to reveal the ghostwriters behind their words. As you may recall, one of my campaign platforms, when I ran for post to Commissioner last year, called for providing more information to Paulding citizens regarding issues coming up for a vote in this body. In my opinion, indefinite information regarding issues coming before this board should be made public before your vote, including the release of non-confidential materials that are contained in the informational packets that are provided to commissioners prior to the vote, packets which I know are frequently leaked to select groups of citizens. I do recognize that the fact that the county attorney may have to make determination in which documents can be released. However, I believe that it is a necessary step in true transparency. Please remember that you all campaigned on transparency. I ask you this question. How can a citizen exercise their First Amendment rights of redressing their government of grievances before the board's vote if the citizens do not have the opportunity to learn enough about the issues to determine whether they in fact have agreements? If our citizens wish to formulate an opinion on whether or not their government is acting in their best interest, these citizens must have time to review proposed actions, including any contracts, agreements, proposals, amendments, et cetera. Citizens must be able to conduct their due diligence regarding these important issues before the deadline for formulating an opinion on the matter. If citizens understand the full scope of an issue, only then may they properly prepare for their First Amendment right to speak to you of their agreements or their support. I hope all Paulding County citizens will find it as interesting as I do that supporters of the competing oligarchies, in our case, warring factions of the Republican Party, are privy to the details of these contracts and agreements and the like well before the vote, thanks to you, their friends on the commission. Therefore, these select few... Therefore, these select few of your friends have the power to understand the issues, redress their grievances, or lend support to your causes, while those of us not associated with the powerful oligarchies that run this county are left out of the decision-making process entirely. Last time I checked, we live in a representative democracy, not an oligarchy. All citizens should be afforded the same rights to access information regarding what transpires before and during these meetings. I would like to see more access to information on agenda items regarding exactly what you'll be voting on prior to the vote. Case in point, it is well known that recently the commission planned to vote to amend the Public Participation Ordinance, allowing for complete unedited meetings to be broadcast on Comcast, including the speakers. Why wasn't wording to that effect on the agenda? Surely, something described so innocuously deserved more explanation as to the details. Wasn't this amendment supposed to benefit all citizens? The days of hidden agendas and vague and perplexing or confusing verbiage must come to an end. It's time to live up to your campaign promises and provide true transparency to all Paulding citizens, instead of just you and your most ardent supporters. After all, it is our government, not just yours, or yours, or yours, or yours. One easy way to make the process fair for all would be to propose an agenda item, then release the supporting information regarding that item so the public will have the opportunity to perform their due diligence, and then wait just a little two weeks before you vote on the matter. Those two weeks between the proposal and action will allow time for real public participation. And no matter what you believe about your own self-importance, nothing you do or have ever done is so important that it can't wait just a little two weeks before you vote on it. Nothing. Thank you. Thank you, Tony.
Do I hear motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn. I agree with Sayah.